Yes.
All right, we are gonna open up the February 24th, 2015 Planning Board Meeting. It's being recorded by Don Mackey for the folks at home. Our Director, Robin McDonald, I'm not gonna really ask for anybody else to record it, there's nobody here. So, first off, we have a request for waiver of site plan for John Kelly, Esquire, 15 Poplar Street.
Property owner is John D. Kelly, 15 Popular Street, East Long Meadow. Name of proposed business is John Kelly Esquire. Owner of business is John D. Kelly. Owner's address is 15 Popular Street. Property address is 15 Popular Street. Number of employees is one. Proposed hours of operation is eight to five. Uh, let's see here. Summary of business operation is consulting and legal services. No clients will be visiting, no signage, no commercial vehicles. This is to have a computer in his house, in his home office.
Pretty straightforward.
Straightforward to me.
Any questions, comments?
Make a motion to approve. I will second the motion, obviously based on all our criteria, including no more than twenty percent of the square footage of the house may be used for the home office, et cetera, et cetera.
All right, motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, next up, we have a request for waiver of site plan for Bodacious Books and Bobbles, 225 Shaker Road.
Property owner is Michael D. Pluta. Owner's address is 502 Glendale Road, Overham. Name of proposed business is Bodacious Books and Bobbles. Owner is Melissa Ann Bugden. Owner's address is 2 Marble Road, Enfield. Property address is 225 Shaker Road. Proposed hours of operation are Monday through Wednesday, ten to five, Thursday through Saturday, ten to eight. Number of employees is one. Summary of business operation is new and used bookstore, featuring local independently published authors from the New England areas, as well as around the US. There'll be, there'll also be for sale products from local artisans. There will be traditionally published books for sale, event signings, book clubs, no food or drink.
All right, where is 225?
225 is right next to the proposed gas station.
Okay, so-
The little frame place.
The cupcake lady?
Yeah, which will be upstairs.
Okay. That's where the baking of the cupcakes was supposed to take place.
Plenty of parking.
You zone for that.
Let's zone for that.
Make a motion to approve.
I will second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, next up is a request for waiver of site plan review for Cub Java, 20 Harris Drive.
Property owner is Johnson Park.
Sounds good to me.
Okay. Owner's address is 20 Harris Drive, East Long Meadow. Name of proposed business is Cub Java. Owner of business is Johnson Park. Owner's address is 20 Harris. Uh, let's see here. Proposed hours of operation are four PM to eight thirty PM weekdays only. Number of employees is one. Summary of business operation is teach students computer programming, AP computer, sign students with their projects, and test preparations. All activities are done via internet, WebEx meetings, all virtual classrooms.
You would approve that business before?
I'd say it sounded familiar.
Yeah, he's just moved to his house. The overhead was too high and he does everything online.
He's doing everything online.
Yeah.
Home office.
Home office.
Make a motion to approve, subject to the standard criteria, that only twenty percent of the house can be used, and that he's got no clients coming to the house.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, next up is a request for a waiver of site plan review, The Hounds Trumpet, 48 Morris Street.
Property owner is Katie Miller Murphy. Owner's address is 48 Morris Street, East Long Meadow. Name of proposed business is The Hounds Trumpet. Owner of business is Katie Miller Murphy. Business owner's address is 48 Morris Street. Proposed hours of operation are eight AM to eight PM. Number of employees is one. Summary of business operation, creative art, glue printing, and matting and framing, craft business, no clients to the site, no commercial vehicles.
So, this is a crafter?
Yes.
Okay. And she's not selling from the site, she's taking over to craft shows?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. You've approved these before.
Yeah.
And I'll make a motion to approve, again, subject to the twenty percent limitation, which would include storage of materials, that twenty percent, and that no clients come to the house. Second.
No more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and last but not least, we have the request for signage, The Carrier Group, 37 Prospect Street.
Name of company, company name and owner is The Carrier Group. Street address is 37A Prospect Street. Well, this is for a sign permit.
Right.
Square footage of sign is fifteen point three. It is single-faced, it is not free standing, it's attached to the building, projection none. Setback from property line is ten feet, distance to top of the sign is nine feet, proposed sign is permanent. Total number of existing signs is one, square footage of existing signs is six square feet. Total number of proposed and existing signs is two. Total square foot of both is twenty-one point three. And I've got a picture.
And that, the glass on that door does not say that anymore. It was an old picture. I talked to George about it, so.
Yep.
It's a real estate business?
That you granted a waiver for.
Yeah. Do I set with reading in?
Yes, sir.
This is actually the sign on Shaker Road. If we remember this building, there's a storefront on Prospect Street and an entrance.
Oh, very technical.
I had a couple of questions earlier for Robin. After reading the bylaw thoroughly, I think this sign is no problem, it's fully legal.
Okay.
And if we can just reiterate on it, because Rabus was denied a sign on that door. She's using that as her primary sign for a customer entrance.
Okay.
And the secondary sign is on, like Ralph said, on Prospect Street, which is very small, it's only six, six square feet. She could have up to, what was it, nine or twelve? I can't remember. So, it's just kind of reversed, because Prospect Street is so small. You can have a secondary sign, as long as it's a customer entrance-
Right.
-of fifty percent. So, I spoke with her today. Like I said, the door does not say employees only, it's a, it's a customer entrance.
Okay.
All right, everybody satisfied with that?
Yep. Make a motion to approve the sign application? I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
The only other thing is whether or not you want to elaborate on the conversation that you had last night with regard to the sidewalks.
I do, I would, I certainly would like for Ty to be here, but-
And we can do that then.
I think we're headed in the right direction. I don't, I don't think the current state of affairs is gonna work, and I can't see us pushing this out for fifty years. That being said, I certainly don't have the answers to get us there sooner. I know there was a lot of ideas floated last night, everybody's got their own opinions. But I think we need to start moving forward. You know, we've been talking and talking, I think now is the time to do something. I was thoroughly disappointed last night when I heard fifty years.
I, I agree with you that, you know, waiting fifty years to get all the sidewalks done, because then we're gonna have to start doing them over again?
Right.
I mean, some of them are already on North Main Street, they're in pretty poor shape.
That was twenty-five years ago, we started that one.
Yeah, so, you know, it's, you'll never get it done. I, I still think it's important for subdivisions to have as complete streets as they can, and that would include sidewalks. You know, the shorter ones, you don't have the buses going down, the bigger ones, people can walk from house to house and get more exercise. However, I would be open to putting in some way to specifically waive it if, if we wanted to have that, but it would have to be, we would need to, as we said last night, make sure that the amount that they contribute for the waiver to the sidewalk fund was, would be equal to the actual amount they would've spent putting the sidewalks in the subdivision. And we would have to rely on probably DPW to give us those numbers. And of course, it would be at the option of the developer as well.
Yeah.
So, that's a decision the developer has to make, as to whether he's gonna spend the same amount of money, does he get the sidewalks, or do they go someplace else?
Right.
You know? But I am open to giving us the flexibility to do that, but I think it has to be really carefully worded.
I agree.
Yeah, because it can't appear to be subjective.
No, and we'd have to write in some default clauses. And when I say that, there's gonna be subdivisions where some of us are gonna want the sidewalks in there for safety, and there's gonna be other times where one or two of us may not. So, for argument's sake, if we can't agree, we need to have a default clause. Basically says, if we can't agree, then sidewalks go in. You know, the developer has the last say, it's his choice, not ours. So, we say, look, the choice is yours, do you wanna contribute? Yes or no? So, if he says yes, then we work out an order, if he says no, I wanna put my sidewalks in, that's his choice. We can't make anybody do anything.
Right.
So, I guess what I'm trying to say is-
You don't think you can make them put the sidewalks in?
Right now, we're making-
No, no.
Right now, we're making them put sidewalks.
Correct. But I'm saying, if, if we as a planning board say, look, we don't think you need sidewalks here, are you willing to contribute?
Oh, 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 oh.
The choice is yours, you can contribute, or you can put your sidewalks in, you know, the choice would be his, not, not ours.
Yeah.
And we can't take away anything that they're entitled to do or not do.
Yeah. So, I, I would like to ask Robin to take a first draft, if you will, of how we might word that.
I see, I see one major problem with that. No one has a definitive, a real definitive plan on where these sidewalks are gonna go.
As far as the master plan or subdivisions?
The master plan.
The only, I'm basing it on the master plan that I saw last night.
Well, that has to be, that has to be determined first, before we can even attempt to do what we're doing.
I'm, I'm not sure about that. I think the master plan is always gonna be a work in progress.
Agreed.
Depending on demographics of the town, where, where people see the need may change over time. Depending on the situation in the schools, new subdivisions could put more kids on the streets. So, I, I think it could change over time. They, they are not committing to that sidewalk plan as, you know, stamped, signed, and delivered, we're never gonna change it. They said that they would be looking at priorities on a yearly basis.
Yeah, I think if anything, it will get bigger, it will not, not change. I don't get bigger.
We've seen, what, four subdivisions on Prospect Street in what?
Right, and there's no-
Three, yeah, three, four years.
With that being said-
Yep.
And us not having a master plan, how do we know a subdivision that's going in isn't gonna be connecting to a main sidewalk?
That's what I mean.
Yeah, but we don't. We don't, unless you have a master plan that says, these are the areas we're doing the walks, so that if there's no chance of a sidewalk ever connecting to it, then George would be correct, I would look at it. But if we don't know that, we don't know where they're gonna connect or not, put the sidewalk in the subdivision.
It's my case in point.
I just-
Then we're defeating, defeating the whole purpose.
Because if, if, if we're gonna require sidewalks on Prospect Street, I mean, subdivisions on Prospect Street to have them, and we never put a sidewalk in there, that's a waste of time.
Here's the other thing, though, let's say-
But we've got some that are on Hinden Road, there's one right down the street from my house, that's gonna go up, the sidewalk goes right there, we're not saying, no, we don't want it there. I mean, it's only three houses, but still.
Here's an objective point of view, if we put two or three or four subdivisions on Prospect Street, right now, there's no plan for a sidewalk on Prospect Street, on MS, right? So, if you took all the money from whatever subdivision, and you put that in, that would pay for the sidewalk down Prospect Street.
And then your subdivision doesn't have sidewalks, so they don't connect.
Right, well, what's the best, what's the safer of the two? Granted, I'm not saying it's a perfect world, but I would rather have the sidewalk on Prospect Street than a subdivision.
Well, that's what I see.
Again, that's why-
The problem is that big, that big subdivision on Prospect, those houses have five bedrooms. Kids-
Right.
Will occupy those five bedrooms.
Correct, yeah.
How are the kids gonna walk to the bus stop safely? I mean, that would be the safety issue, that's why-
But it's not a main road.
You've got one across the street that has, has sidewalks already.
Yes.
Ruffino's got them.
And it has the, the waiting area.
Betterly's got them.
Right, but I don't see the town running all the way down to the city line to pick up five houses.
Don't forget, you gotta notice something-
No, I understand that. And there's another one coming up.
Betterly has sidewalks.
And, and you've got a subdivision at the town line, which does not have sidewalks, but-
It doesn't?
No.
No.
Really?
No.
South Brook?
South Brook.
Really?
They don't have-
But you got a thirty foot-
That's interesting. Well, there's a perfect example.
It was a choice by the, of the planning board at that particular time, when that subdivision went in.
And what was the mindset?
At one point in time, it was changed where they were required, but at the time, it was subjective to whatever.
And that's a huge subdivision.
I mean, that's, that's a town in and of itself.
It is.
So, that's the kinda place where you'd, like Great Woods, where you'd want it, so you could go from one end to the other without having to drive. But that's water under the bridge.
Yeah, I guess I'm looking at it a little bit differently.
And it's hard to put, it's hard to put an exact spot on everything.
No, I understand that.
You know, every scenario is different. I mean, if you put a subdivision over on, in Vineland, down in that way, I mean, it's almost impossible to get sidewalks going there.
Right, but if I'm gonna walk, I would rather walk on a side street than a main road. I'd rather walk on a sidewalk on a main road.
There's a lot of runners in this neighborhood.
I know.
I mean, in this town, and I avoid quite a bit.
Yeah, there's no perfect answer here, that I will say.
No.
There's definitely no perfect answer.
Well, I agree.
Does the board want to have, not a public hearing, but a, a meeting with the public, invite the public to talk and see how many, what their thoughts are, and with regard to, you know, whether or not they would be willing to talk about bonding, something like that, in speaking up at town meeting? Because it would have to go to town meeting if you're gonna look for a bond.
The only problem is, we're, we're, we're looking at the subdivisions, we're not looking at the roads that have to be done.
Well, if we got the bonding money-
No, you can as a planning board-
Then I would probably shell the subdivision idea.
I mean, that was a time, the rates are the cheapest, and the neighbors are the cheapest you could get.
I'd like that Plan A, B, and possibly C, because the plan we have right now is, we don't have one.
Yeah.
The plan we have is right now is not gonna be productive, it's not-
It's not gonna be in conjunction with DPW, if not, it's not gonna work.
Do you want me to talk to the accountant then, and see what the figures, what you're looking at?
I think-
Well, before we see any figures-
It's not our, it's not our purview, though. It's not our department.
Well, we have to know, well-
Yeah, I disagree.
No, it's planning.
Anyone, anyone can bring it forward, I mean, planning, sidewalks is planning.
Right.
It is.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
We can certainly take it upon ourselves to move forward with some kind of a motion bonding, something. But we should have all our information before we, in fact, so I would think I would start with that, some numbers, some feasibility numbers, and some language for a Plan B, and then we can discuss it amongst us five, and once we have our head wrapped around it, then we can invite the public in.
I mean, I don't see a problem inviting the public to a meeting and getting input, if anyone's willing to come.
True. Now, you wanna do that before or after the language and or numbers, or you wanna wait till we have that first?
We would need numbers before-
Right, I would, yeah, let's have that, discuss that, and then we'll-
Yeah, okay.
How's that sound?
So, do you want another meeting with DPW?
No.
Or do you want me to meet with the accountant and see how many miles there are?
Right, so for argument's sake, we know there's-
Get some figures.
Eight miles, roughly?
We know there's miles at seventy-five, seventy-five dollars a foot, linear foot. What we don't know is how that translates into an annual cost if we bond it.
Okay.
Okay, and that's where the accountant can help us out.
Yeah.
Because there's, you know, between the interest rates and paying back the principal, and you're paying down the principal, you know, I could do it, but I'd rather not, but-
I'm wondering if there's any grants from DOT.
For sidewalks? Not without a master plan.
Yeah, I'd be surprised if there was.
That's what, that's what I'm saying here.
All right, that would be one of the questions, my second, or one of my questions would be, would that prohibit us from getting more money?
Yeah.
What is the cap to bonding? Because, you know, like, like it's been said by Mr. Mackey, if we take away from one, we're just kinda stealing from another.
Yeah.
You know, and everybody's got ideas of what should be important first and foremost, as far as a school, town hall, sidewalks, you know, no two people are gonna agree on that.
Right, and I know the school is out of the question this year, but I have a feeling it'll probably be right back there next year.
It's not-
It's not far away.
It's not a noise that's gonna go away.
I think that, you know, when they, when they choose which schools are eligible, I think they have a list, and then they use, you know, the state says, okay, the top five, well, that pushes the bottom five up to the top five for the next year.
Oh, okay.
So, I, I think that, that the school's gonna come back next year.
It's never gonna go away.
It's never gonna go away, there's a lot of backing for that.
And the new town hall, there's apparently more backing as we, as everything goes on, so.
Yeah, so unfortunately, I think sidewalks will not be paramount, I still would like to look into it nonetheless.
I think so. I think we look into it, if we're already allocating seventy-five thousand a year-
A year, right, and we have ninety-five thousand now.
And you're looking at a twenty-year bond, let's see what that would get us.
Yeah.
Get it done, yeah.
Yeah, so let's start with some numbers, and maybe some language, and then get Ty back here.
I mean, the price of sidewalks, the installation is not gonna come down.
It's only gonna go up.
It's gonna continue to go up, when I saw original-
And are you talking about contracting it out, rather than-
Well, if you're gonna do eight miles-
Contracting it out.
You have to contract it out.
Yeah, because, that's the other thing, too, we just don't have the manpower to get it done, they're not gonna do eight miles of sidewalk in a year, or two years, or twenty years, just not-
Well, not only that, if you get somebody who specializes in sidewalks, it's gonna go faster and cheaper.
And it's bing, 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 bing.
You can set up just for sidewalks.
I mean, we should be looking at that anyways.
And, and that way, the town doesn't have to pay for the, the police detail.
Well, you end up paying for it anyway.
It would be, yeah, but that would be their number, be a separate number.
Yeah.
Because I, I don't know where I, I heard it, twenty-four thousand dollars last year for police?
Yeah.
That just seems astronomical.
Well, anytime you pull a police officer, for example, when we have our round tables, that's why I always tried, when Rick was on duty, to get him to come when he was on duty during days, it was very difficult, because most of the time, as a sergeant, he was at night. We, well, he was paid, and, and not just him individually, but any police officer that's not, if it's not their shift, the, they, they're paid for four hours, whether they spend ten minutes, two hours, or four hours, they're paid for four hours.
I understand that, and it makes perfect sense.
Because Chief Melas was, you know, asking to, you know, to keep the cost down, so, yeah, the details are varied, so.
No, it makes perfect sense. Okay.
All right.
One other item, two items. One was PVPC is sponsoring a day of training on a new kind of zoning that's floating around called form-based zoning, and I have tried to figure out what it is, and it's rather complex. I'm gonna go to the training, if anyone else wants to go to it, it's free. I, I believe the date is May 26th.
I think it is.
At PVPC, it'll be like an all-day thing with lunch. It's free, if you wanna, if you're a planning board member or administrator. I, I wanna find out what it is, and I don't know that we would, it'd be appropriate for us or not, but I can't make that judgment till I know a little more about it. So, I'm gonna go down and take the training and see what it's all about, if anybody else is interested, you know?
Where is it?
At PVPC in downtown, eighty Congress Street.
Okay.
Okay.
The old Hooters.
Is there any, even inclination as far as what they're looking at?
I have some, I have some stuff that I can throw at you if you want, and it gives you a detail. I got some more information today, I think it was today or yesterday, also on it.
Instead of, of looking over, at the overall site, it focuses on what it looks like from the street, okay, and it's more urban oriented, okay, in terms of height and design of buildings, and what you do about parking. It builds in more flexibility on parking, but it's, it's a, it's a whole discipline that I know nothing about, and I'd like, since it's free, I wanna find out what it is before somebody comes in and tries to sell it to us, and we don't know what they're talking about, okay?
Interesting.
So, and then, what was the other one I gave you, Robin? I gave you a second sheet of paper, if you hear what it was, you know, going out of my head. Yeah.
Yes, ABCs of form-based codes.
Right, and-
And, oh, I'm sorry, I have stuff for you guys right here. I'm glad you mentioned it.
Yeah. This is stuff I get when I go to the meetings, and I wanna make you guys aware of it anyway, so that you don't feel we're totally out of the loop. This, yeah, this is the new zoning reform law that is, is going through the legislature, okay? Right now, it's just a docket number, it's not even a bill, but these are the highlights of the zoning reform that's being pushed for this session. It's simplified from what was trying to get through in the last two sessions, which didn't go anywhere.
No, it just sat there forever.
I think the highlights on here are the change from A&R to minor subdivision, consolidated permitting, development impact fees, inclusionary zoning is something that probably doesn't apply to this town, but it simplifies the languages on, language on it. It would expand the use of variances, reduces required vote on special permits to a simple majority from a supermajority, and so on and so forth. So, some of this is actually beneficial to us, some of it you may not agree with, but you ought to be aware that this is what is being introduced into the legislature this year as the zoning reform. This is something that's been, been attempted for at least ten years, and every year, it usually bog-stones down because of the developer opposition to it. In the past, it's been much more complex, and what they're trying to do is get the most important elements in without messing it up too badly. The minor subdivision one is the one that most planning boards are really interested in. It would eliminate A&R and allow you, or not eliminate, but it would allow you to replace A&R with minor subdivision, so that you don't have, you know, in A&R, ten houses along a street suddenly, you know, which is basically a subdivision, and no ability to regulate it whatsoever.
And I think it limits it to, what, three lots?
Yeah, something.
Like it has a Springfield House.
It would not eliminate A&R for things like, I want to trade three feet of backyard with my neighbor, okay? But it would allow you to regulate large amounts of subdivision that would be on, on an existing right-of-way. Right now, we can only do it if they put a new right-of-way in.
And it, it increases the requirements, too, for an A&R, it's no longer just frontage And it, it increases the requirements, too, for an A and R, it's no longer just frontage requirements, so.
So, and, and again, this is just a docket number, it's not even a bill yet. What will finally emerge from committee will probably not resemble this at all, but just to give you a heads up that this is what's starting, so you're aware of it.
I see the consolidated permitting, I think we've been trying to.
Yeah, we do that anyway.
Well, we're supposed to.
Well, when we have a special permit and a site plan. Um, there, also, the Meals on Wheels, the Council on Aging is looking out to see if we have some volunteers to accompany the Meals on Wheels people and deliver.
Say volunteer for that one, I never, never called for that.
Really, well, I can make sure you get called for it.
I did, I honestly did volunteer.
It is, it is a remarkable experience, I was really humbled when I, I didn't realize, and I, I think it's a good thing, it's a good thing for the community, it's a good thing for our boards.
What was the date of it?
Takes about an hour and a half, it's Meals on Wheels, you ride with a, a specific person and deliver meals to the, to the elderly.
Are they doing it on a specific day, or is it just?
I believe it's Fridays.
March sixteenth through the twentieth, so you can, I can put your names in, and you can be contacted for whatever day is good for you. But it's, it's amazing, the, how many people wait in anticipation of people delivering just for the human contact, okay, so Michael?
Absolutely.
Sandro?
I might be able to do one day.
Think about it.
Yep.
Ralph?
Yes.
George?
I'm gonna pass.
And we have minutes of February tenth, Donna sent them out, and I want to send them back, so. You didn't read them, or you didn't have any changes?
I had a chance to look at it, yeah.
All right.
Didn't look all the way through.
There was something else I wanted to ask you. Oh, I've been going through the zoning bylaw book, and unfortunately, the last printing, that's what, you have a, another page. I found a few things that are just, you know, most of them are printing errors, not necessarily typos, just, you know, paragraphs aren't there and stuff. And I've also given some consideration for some new zoning bylaws, and what I'd like to do is invite the zoning review committee to the next planning board meeting, and talk about what you want them to start looking at. For example, a rooming house, we know they're not allowed in town, but it doesn't specifically address that. And I, and things have been coming up with regard to that happening, and we need, I think we need to, you know, make it more clarified. It's not an allowed use because of that clause that we have at the very beginning. And what a rooming house is, or people are, most of them are the, the two-family homes, they're renting out individual rooms. And there's a whole slew of regulations that need to be met in order for a rooming house to be allowed, which aren't being met, it's not an allowed use. Just need to, you know, clean up and clarify some of the zoning. Also, George mentioned today that.
Airbnb.
Yeah, Airbnb.
Everybody know what that is?
I do not.
It's an app, basically, where, or, actually, it's on the web, where people can list their homes as available for rent on a short-term basis.
Albeda breakfast, I did see that.
Like overnight?
Yeah.
Okay.
Instead of a hotel.
Instead of a hotel, yeah, it's very big in New York City, because, you know, hotels go for five hundred bucks a night, you can get a whole apartment for a hundred and twenty. But it's, in my mind, it's the equivalent of, of a motel, which is not allowed in the town. I, I think there are serious issues about, you know, short-term rentals, like overnight rentals, to people in residential areas. It's being done in Long Meadow without any regulation right now, there's one listing in Long Meadow. I've asked their planning board to get back to me as to how they plan to handle it, and they haven't made a decision yet. But it's something that is not gonna go away, it's gonna get bigger, and I think that it's something that we need to be, think about, you know. Do we wanna allow this, we don't, how do we write the zoning bylaw to prevent it?
And how, in fact, do we prevent it, that's the other problem.
Well, I mean, you can go online and type in a zip code, and it'll give you the listings in that zip code. So it's something that, you know, it, it's not really under the table, it's out there, it's, it's not, you know, hidden.
Right.
And if it's not allowed in town, we, we need to really think about what language we would use to, to do that. I know, in New York, it's a big deal, because the hotels are all upset, because these people aren't paying hotel taxes.
Right.
Okay, you know, they're, they're not paying, unionize people to clean the rooms, and all this kind of thing, and they don't need code for.
Right, that's what I was just saying.
A rental, okay, you know, but it's, it's happening anyway. I mean, in New York, it's happened for a hundred and fifty years, but it's, it's now out there in the open on the internet, so I think we need to, we can't ignore it.
And I'd just like to, you know, to give you an opportunity to speak with the people on the review committee, you know, this is the first town meeting since I've been here eighteen years, that we are not putting forth a zoning bylaw change. There are things that need to be addressed, new uses in town, new uses just because of, you know, the technology and the way things are going. If you could give it some thought, I would like to invite them, it's up to you, though.
I think that'd be great, and can you send us your thoughts on what we, what you think we ought to be looking at, so that we have a chance to think about it in advance?
Section six findings was something that you were interested in, too.
Yeah, I think it needs to be, take some of the ambiguity out of the language.
How we need, yeah, what you're looking for, what, what we need to make the changes, how we need to make the changes, what kind of language you would like in them. I just think that, you know, now that we don't have anything that's really pressing, you know, to make a change, I think, and I also think that that big box bylaw should be clarified. It, it's a mess, you can't understand it for anything, the way it's written, you couldn't when it was written, but I think that needs to be cleaned up, too. So the, the zoning review committee just needs your direction as to how you wanna deal with things. All right, so the next meeting, I can invite them then?
Sure.
Right, if we don't suddenly have six hearings.
Building is starting to pick up.
I'm sure it's.
A plan is coming in for the, the new product, the new project over on North Main Street next week, so.
Which one's that?
March twenty fourth, you should be having the site plan, the LePlants are building a bank plus their office building.
Where is this?
On North Main Street.
Next to Ben Mays.
Oh, Ben Mays, okay, oh, that one, yeah, okay.
So that's gonna be a, you know, a new site, and the gas station come spring will be underway. They may be coming back with regard to the access to the downstairs. They have a, they think they have a co-brand that's going in there, but they're not quite sure yet, and the co-brand wanted the access to the storage facility downstairs outside, I don't know how that works when you have snow and ice, but they may be coming back to make a change on the site plan. But I know construction will be starting as soon as the ground draws.
Oh, yes.
And then there's the projects, you know, down further on North Main Street that are still in the, sitting in the wings.
Okay. Sounds like it's gonna be a busy year.
Hopefully.
I think so.
All right, anything else?
No.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Don.